There we go. Okay, the Planning Board meeting of May 25th, 2023. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2023 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, meeting and application documents have been made available on the township's website or civic clerk website, and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. And with that, may I have a roll call of board members and board and township professionals?
Let the record reflect, Mr. Chairman, that Mr. Delkor, Mr. Hestag, and Vice Chair Julian are absent. Mr. Radowitz is recused for this evening's roll call. Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Peason.
Present.
Mr. Scobbo.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Kim Mimi Ciccarelli.
Here.
Merrill Lepani.
Here.
Chairman Sarachi.
Here.
Mr. Coys.
Here.
I'm here. Mr. Mayu.
Here.
Mr. Lombardozzi is remote, and Mr. Tolleson is here.
Okay. Thank you. And we do not have any consideration of meeting minutes, no resolutions, no planning board business, and no consideration of ordinances. So I will move now to business from the floor for matters not on this evening's agenda. And as a reminder, a five-minute time limit, and also no comment on warehouses directly or indirectly, since we have an active application this evening, and a few others in the pipeline. Okay, let's see.
I wanted to acknowledge that we were excited to see the proposed ordinances from the Township Committee this week. And we thought it was appropriate to acknowledge that and, you know, express our gratitude for, you know, for these kinds of things that are, I think, are really protective of our town. So just wanted to say that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no one else. We will move on to this evening's public application, public hearing. I'll also invite the objectors. This, I think, is your side, so I don't think we have enough chairs for everyone, but whoever wants it. So this evening, we have Homestead Road LLC with file number of 21-PB-25-MS backslash MSPV with the time of decision, June 30th this year. And let's see, where did we carry this from? This is a continuation from our April 13th meeting this year without further notice. And with that, I will turn it over to Counselor.
Before Mr. Giannetti puts his appearance on the record, as well as the objectors, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note for the record that we have a certification by absent board member, examination of record eligibility to vote, signed by Mr. Wagner for the meeting for April 13th. He is therefore eligible.
Okay. And do we also need to introduce why you believe we have a fifth objector?
Well, I think the objectors will note their own indication for the record after Mr. Giannetti is done introducing himself for the record.
Okay.
Can I make a procedural clarification or ask a question? Scott Gross, Ait White Meadow Road. At the April 13th meeting, there was significant discussion on whether the application could should be heard until the ongoing NJDEP investigation was submitted satisfactorily. We decided, or it was decided last week or at the last meeting, to let the LSRP make their case. And they said, we said tonight, we would make another decision if there were any updates from the NJDEP. I wanted to ask if there were any updates and if you were prepared to make any advisements to the board, Mr. Bernstein or Mr. Coys.
I'm aware, Mr. Chairman, that there is any difference in the current situation there was at the last meeting. If Mr. Coys, who is busily rearranging the electronics here, is there any change from DEP from our last meeting in terms of this application?
There's no, no new information that we have received.
And the matter should go forward, Mr. Chairman. For the time being, without prejudicing the board's decision in the future date to make a decision based on same.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Craig Giannetti of the law firm Day Pitney on behalf of the applicant Homestead Road LLC. As the chairman noted, this is a continued application for preliminary and final major site plan and minor subdivision approval for property located at 189 and 203 Homestead Road, Block 200.10, lots 32 and 33. As was noted at the last meeting in April, we were here with and presented the testimony of Mr. Robinson, our LSRP. We also had our traffic engineer available to testify as well. After lengthy discussion with the board, we were able to complete the direct examination of Mr. Robinson. And the agreed procedure following that was the board had asked questions of Mr. Robinson. They can ask further questions this evening. He's made available. The objectors and the public would have an opportunity to ask Mr. Robinson questions. Following that, we would then move to our planner and complete public questioning on the subdivision portion of the application only. And then when Ms. Cofone, our planner, is done with that testimony and the public comment, we would then move on to Mr. Ford, who would testify as to the last submission and revised plans that were submitted to the board, do direct examination, and as far as we go with board questioning and public questioning. So unless there's any other procedural issues for me, I'd like to call my first witness, David Robinson.
Mr. Chairman, for purpose of the record, can we get the appearances of the objectors on the record?
Sure. Good evening. My name is Mike Passaro. I'm the Policy Director for the Watershed Institute, and I'm an attorney in the state of New Jersey.
Brian Tarantino, I represent SWAT, the community group called SWAT.
John Lanahan, thank you. John Lanahan, resident in 43 Whiting Way. Just for the record, although I'm an attorney in the state of New Jersey, I'm not here. I'm here on my own behalf.
Lucy Sandler, I'm here on behalf of the Sauerland Conservancy.
Scott Gross, resident, White Meadow Road.
I believe with that, Mr. Chairman, we can resume with Mr. Robinson as per Mr. Giannetti's description of the start of this evening.
Sure. And I guess, also, I guess so the record's clear, though I don't intend to argue it any further. We place an objection as to both SWAT and the new objector, Cholton Conservancy, being presented as objectors and representing a group but not being represented by council. We noted our objection. Mr. Bernstein provided, you know, his opinion, and we'd just like to continue to know our objection that's continuing.
Noted.
So I guess with that, Mr. Robinson, you recognize that you remain under oath, that you were sworn in at the last meeting?
Yes.
And you remain under oath this evening with your testimony?
Yes.
Just put the mic closer to you, please.
Yes. Make sure it's on.
So, and at the last meeting, we presented your direct examination, and you answered some questions of the board. So with that, I'd open it up to the board or as professionals for any further question as direct examination.
David? Any questions?
No.
If there are none, I then would ask it be opened to the objectors for their examination.
Just want to make sure I know one from the board. Okay? Any?
There's nothing outstanding on our review at this point.
Okay. So I will turn it over to the objectors.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson, when you test of, let me, let me ask a preliminary question.
Thank you. My name is Mike Passaro again. I think I'm objector one. I'm not sure. One, a few times, I think I might be one. So, Mr. Robinson, since you gave testimony at the last hearing, have you or your company done any additional investigation on the site?
We have not. We have not. I apologize for my voice.
Quite all right. All right. Now, when you testified last time, I think you mentioned that the site owner had multiple environmental investigations done in the past. And I think if I recall correctly, in your report, the last one was in 1990. Is that an accurate recollection?
He did have ones done in the past. I don't know if that date is accurate, but let me see. I don't have that specific date, but that sounds about the correct timeframe.
All right. And you relied on those findings in part to form your opinions in the preliminary assessment and in your work?
Yes, we did, but we performed our own preliminary assessment, and some of those areas were re-sampled.
Okay, but not all of those areas?
No, only the ones that we found during our site inspection and preliminary assessment.
But did you go back and investigate all of the AOCs or areas of concern that?
We looked at the old documents to form part of our opinion about the areas of concern.
So it would be accurate to say you didn't go back and relook at all of the AOCs in that report?
We didn't go back and reinvestigate.
Okay.
Okay, we didn't reinvestigate. We looked at them.
Fair enough. And since 1990, standards have changed, correct?
Yes, quite a bit.
All right. And do you recollect who did that report?
I do not.
At the time when you looked at that report, did you form an opinion as to whether that report was reliable?
Yes, we did. We had all the data for our use. The data was reliable. What you do with, with these data, especially when cleanup standards change, is you look to see how much they changed. You do what's called an order of magnitude analysis. So the DEP requires for an investigation that if you're above an order of magnitude for a certain standard, you have to reinvestigate it. Preliminary assessment is not as stringent as, as a site investigations or reinvestigation, but we did look at all those data.
Okay. And in the last 30 years, you would agree with me that detection limits and detection sensitivities have increased?
Quite a bit.
Okay. So as you were doing your work and as you testified here, have you overlaid those areas of concern with the site plans?
No, we haven't.
Okay. And I think, I think you mentioned or testified at the last hearing that most of the violations of DEP standards were due to migration to groundwater?
They're not violations, okay? Let's not call them violations.
Okay, above standards.
Above standard. And yes, the majority were above migration to groundwater, current migration to groundwater.
Can, can you explain to me what that means?
Okay, so basically, as I explained in my last testimony, there's different standards. There's health-based standards for residential, non-residential inhalation, ingestion, and migration of groundwater, which means that a migration of groundwater standard exceeded, there is a potential for that contamination to migrate to groundwater over time. Okay, that's not a health-based standard. Okay, so that's a standard for affecting groundwater. So it has nothing to do with human health. It's environmental standard.
But it is an environmental standard to be protective of our groundwater?
Correct.
And in many cases, our groundwater is connected to surface water.
Sometimes it is, sometimes it isn't.
All right. And do you know what the closest private well is to the site?
I do not know that offhand. See if it's in the report. I do not believe it was, it was within half a mile away, or we would have recommended investigating it. I don't have that information right now.
All right. And when you testified last time, you mentioned there were basically two different types of soil remediation, and that's, I'm sorry, remediation. There's soil removal, you remove the contaminants from the soil, or you would do a cap.
Well, there's many different types of remediation.
But those are the two you mentioned?
The two I mentioned here, which would make the most sense, given the concentrations of development, is either removal or, or engineering controls, which most people know as a cap.
So you would put an impervious cover so infiltration doesn't occur?
Correct.
Okay. Then the building and the parking lots would be?
Landscaped areas, everything, yes.
And there are other types of remediation. There would be a pump and treat or if it's got into the groundwater.
Yeah, there's pump and treats for groundwater. There's advanced technologies. There's all those.
Did you sample the groundwater to see whether there was contamination in the groundwater itself?
We have not gotten to groundwater.
Okay.
Once we complete the soil investigation and delineation, then we'll make a determination as to if groundwater sampling is required and where we're going to perform it.
So right?
Not at that point right yet.
Okay, so right here, before this board, you don't have the, the data to say one way or the other whether the groundwater has become contaminated?
We do not have any data to say whether groundwater is contaminated. We don't have all the data yet to determine if we need to perform a groundwater investigation.
And likewise, I'm going to assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, you haven't sampled the water in the tributaries to the Roche Brook that are on site?
That's correct, again.
So again, one way or the other, you can't say whether there is contamination in that surface water?
That's correct.
All right. And in your report, you mentioned area of concern 10, which was a stormwater ditch. How do you know it's a stormwater ditch and not a stream?
It was identified as a stormwater ditch. I am not a land use expert, so I cannot for sure say it's not a stream. That has to come from the land use people. I don't know if an LOIO has been issued, but it has to come from that. But it was identified as a ditch because it was dry. It wasn't wet all the time. That could change based on the letter of interpretation, but that's not my expertise to determine that.
So whether it was an intermediate, intermittent, or ephemeral stream, you wouldn't have knowledge one way or the other?
That's correct. And quite frankly, doesn't matter because the standards would be the same.
Okay. Do you know where you got the identification for that feature as a stormwater ditch?
I do not. It was probably from like the geotechnical investigation.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Gross, have any questions? He's next on the list.
Oh, he's next.
You sure?
And then I'm, am I three? I think I'm on three.
Three.
All right. Mr. Robinson, the, it was your, your firm that did the phase one report? Is that true?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And you're familiar with that report?
I am not. We do not, since I'm an LSRP, I do not do phase one work. So I am not too familiar with that report. I try to stay away from it on purpose so it does not cloud my judgment on doing the investigations.
Okay. You did read the report, though, didn't you?
I did not.
You didn't read the report?
Nope.
So are we going, just, are we going to get a chance to question Synergy Environmental about their phase one report?
No.
No, a preliminary assessment report is a much more robust report than a phase one. And a phase one is not recognized by NJDP as an official report. Preliminary assessment is.
Okay. I mean, it would seem appropriate that we'd be able to, to question Synergy Environmental regarding a report they submitted about the property and contamination and their investigation. It would seem like strange.
Phase one is not an investigation. It's a phase one.
Their assessment, they did a, they did a survey.
Again, Mr. Tarantino, you're using the correct language. It was a phase one. We have the LSRP, who is the one that is reviewing the site for environmental contamination and remediation. He's going to be the one signing off on it, and as you already testified to, the preliminary assessment, which is recognized by the DEP, phase ones are not recognized by the DEP, is the controlling document. So you may not think it's right, but this is the process.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, are you aware that the property has been used for agriculture for many years?
Yes.
And in fact, the phase one report says since 1931.
Okay.
And in fact, the phase one report recommended that historically applied pesticide sampling is recommended. Did you guys consider doing pesticide sampling to determine if there was any pesticide contamination at the site?
Until we, excuse me, until we complete our medial investigation, that has yet to be determined. If we determine that there's need to sample for pesticides, we will sample for pesticides. Pesticides were sampled during the site investigation and were below standard. So right now, there's no indication to sample for pesticides.
What areas were sampled for pesticides? I didn't, where is that in the report?
It's in the preliminary assessment report.
I'm familiar with it. Where, where in the preliminary assessment report?
Look in the data, in the data packages, right? So tables?
Yep. I'm on table three. That's page 41. Where, where is, where is the list of? Of pesticides there that you tested for?
Let me see. So table five in the semi-volatiles.
Hang on, so not table three?
No, I gotta look at table three. It actually, it's easier to pull it up, what was there?
Okay, so.
I don't know how this works.
Table five is on page 53.
So, but anyway, if, if it's determined that pesticides are required in other areas, we will certainly analyze for pesticides.
So you're saying you did not do?
We did do pesticides. They're in the semi-volatile stuff, but we didn't run the, we didn't run the pesticide scan.
Okay, so you, so there are a few pesticides in the semi-volatile scan, which I see on table five, which is for only one area of concern. The vehicle wash area is the, so far is the only area of concern that you said that you did a partial scan for pesticides.
Yeah. Table one, all samples were taken for, for the semi-volatile. So yeah, there was a partial scan.
I didn't see that in table one. Are we?
One, two.
If you could direct me to that, that would be great.
Sure. So, so it's the semi-volatile organics by GCMS section. I don't have page numbers. I don't know where you get page numbers.
So that was for the workshop soil area?
That was for where we sampled, yes.
Okay. That's page 35, I see that. So not all the pesticides?
No, correct.
Okay. And why didn't you do, since it's an agricultural site and a historic agricultural site, why didn't you test for pesticides?
Because we have not gotten to that point yet. Okay, so right now, we are concentrated on the areas that's concerned that we identified. We're going to delineate those. If it's determined, I apologize for my voice. If it's determined that we need to sample for pesticides, we will sample for pesticides.
For just, in just those two areas of concern?
No, in where we have to, if we have to sample to. So for example, if we're out there doing our work and there's indication that it might be a pesticide spray area or whatever, we will sample for pesticides.
Okay. So you're saying that if there's an area of concern that you've deemed no further investigation required, which was most of them, you're saying that that would, those would not be areas that you would, unless there was some other, other evidence?
Correct.
Okay. So you've basically determined that pesticide sampling is not required unless you have, you know, you find a sprayer or, you know, something like that?
Correct. Correct. Just because you have old farm fields doesn't mean you have to sample for pesticides. Okay? We have to determine if pesticides were used there, and if yet, they have not been determined.
So any of the, do any of the contaminants that were found, are any, in your professional judgment, are any of the contaminants that were found indicators of pesticide contamination?
No. One of the only contaminants we found in some areas was arsenic, which could have been used as a pesticide. But based on concentrations and where we found it and discreet points, does not seem like it was there because of pesticide usage.
And mercury?
And mer, same thing, discreet point stuff. So, so if we took five samples and we found arsenic and mercury at the same type of concentration in those samples, we might say, hey, this is a problem. But we didn't. We found, you know, some arsenic here, some mercury here, things like that. So there was no indication that these were from pesticides.
So help me understand, what would be the indication that it was from pesticides?
More site-wide.
More site-wide. So if you, in fact, if you look at the, the April 22nd, 1991 investigation that was done, levels of mercury above the, above the?
Liberation.
Groundwater pathway soil remediation standard of 0.1 parts per, of 100 parts per billion were detected in the debris pile?
Correct.
At, at 130 and 400 parts per billion. Also in the stream, mercury was detected at 90 and 70, so below the, below the, the limit, and in the parking area. So quite a number of the places that you looked, you found some?
Not three of the places. I wouldn't say quite a number, but okay. We did. It still does not indicate pesticides.
And, and also the truck parking area, you found mercury at?
Correct.
At 640 parts per billion.
Correct.
AOC, area of concern eight.
Correct.
So in the debris pile, in the stream, in the parking area, in, in the stormwater ditch, what's called the stormwater ditch. Now, it wasn't detected, but the limit of detection was 11, 110, so. And in the buried AOC 18, which I'm not sure if that's the same as the debris pile. So you did find mercury in quite a number of places. It wasn't like one place or two places. And it wasn't just one location on the site. Is that, isn't that right?
Okay, so in AOC 18, which is a test pits with refusal, there was no mercury above standard. Okay, so we didn't find mercury there. Just because you might find something below standard, right, DEP regulations are, are clear. If it's below standard, it's not there. So there was no mercury above standard in those areas. So, and that was in one to five sample locations.
No, that, in, in the buried refuge area, correct me if I'm wrong, but you did, in the samples that you took, there were several that were above the point, the 100 parts per billion limit. But you used the compliance averaging method
Correct.
to, to average that down below the
Correct.
100. Yeah. So you did see mercury?
Saw mercury, but not above standard.
Right. Do you know whether mercury is considered a, a background contaminant?
On this site, I don't know because we didn't do a background investigation.
Are you familiar with the, the EC memo that was, that addressed this point? The Environmental Commission memo that addressed this point?
Uh, when was that memo?
December 7th, 2022.
And what is the point you're referring to?
Uh, it's on page two, number two. The EC has concerns regarding the mercury levels on site. And item C, they say that NJDP in the 1990s did an extensive research into naturally occurring background metals throughout the state, and then they give a reference. They did not identify mercury as a typical background metal, and in fact note that their results suggest that mercury in soil is most likely from industrial activity or regional atmospheric deposition. So are you familiar with that, like the, the points that, that the Environmental Commission?
I don't understand what you're trying to get at here.
So you seem to be making a distinction, and even in your, in your testimony last time, at the last meeting, you, on page 51 of the, of the transcript, you said, this is not site-wide contamination. These are very specific areas of concern.
Okay.
And, and so what did you base that conclusion on?
On the data we have so far.
And what, and even though like for mercury, you're finding mercury in many different places.
Right, but not everywhere?
Not everywhere, sure.
Okay, so that's, that's why you go AOC by AOC. Because if I found it everywhere, then I might have made a different conclusion. But I didn't find it everywhere, so that's my conclusion.
So you need to find it in 18 out of 18?
I have not given you a number of what I need to find it in.
Okay.
I just know it's not in every sample.
Okay, so it's not in every sample, so then it's, so it's not site-wide.
It's AOC-specific, correct.
Okay. So in your, in your follow-up remediation investigation, are you going to be looking for delineating the extent of the mercury contamination?
We will be delineating the extent of contamination that we have so far. So the answer is, if we have mercury contamination above standard that we could not compliance average out, we will be delineating those sample points.
And you do have that?
And we will be delineating.
Is that, is that right? Like AOC eight, the truck parking area?
Correct.
Was at 640 parts per billion?
That's correct. That's AOC seven, I believe is truck parking area.
I might have it, I might have it wrong. But you're not going to do, okay, I already asked that question, sorry.
Yeah, so anything that has to be delineated will be delineated.
Um, I'd like to ask you about your process for, for delineating the extent of contamination. Are you saying that, like, because you, the, the, so for instance, the diesel, the area of concern six, the diesel storage tank. Help me understand what it is that you did to delineate the extent of contamination of that, from that area of concern?
Well, there was no contamination, so. Let me see what AOC six was. Yeah, so AOC six was a diesel storage tank, which is above ground, which is actually not even regulated by the DEP because it's above ground. However, to be thorough, we decided to take a sample beneath that to make sure it not leaked. There was no indication in the tanks there was leak. There wasn't stressed vegetation. There wasn't staining. So we took a sample. There was nothing there, so there's no contamination to delineate. We took a sample and determined that there was no contamination there and no further action.
If you had read the Phase One report, you would see a photo, and if, and you could pull up that, pull up that photo, you could see there's extensive contamination around there, staining and, and.
Well, staining is not contamination, so let's get the nomenclature correctly. There was staining.
There's indication. You just said there was no staining. I'm telling you that during, during the Phase One report, there was, there was extensive staining and, and distressed vegetation.
You have to understand, Phase One reports are snapshots in time. Okay, when we did our preliminary assessment, which includes a site walk, there was no indication of contamination. Okay, so I can only go by what I see on site.
Okay, not.
And we took a sample.
And not what the, and not the, what was recommended by your firm?
It was recommended, I guess, in the thing, and we took a sample. There was nothing there. So I don't know what you want us to look for, but we did.
The second, I'll, I'll read a quote from the Phase One report. Soil and groundwater samples should be collected at the location of the, of the above-ground storage tank.
Okay, well soil samples were, were collected.
There was, there was a soil sample, a single soil sample that was screened with the PID, but no samples were taken and no groundwater samples were taken.
That's correct.
So your firm recommended, based on their report, that there be, based on visual evidence of, of staining and distressed vegetation, that there be soil samples taken and groundwater samples taken, but you didn't do that. Is that right?
No, again, a Phase One is not as robust as a preliminary assessment.
It's as, it's as robust as it is. I mean, there was a photo in the report of that tank, and you can see the staining, you could see the, the staining on the soil, because it's, it's, there's no contained, there's no secondary containment for the tank, and you can see distressed vegetation. So preliminary or not preliminary, it's, it's as definitive as you can see.
Again, when I did my site inspection, there was no indication that there was contamination to be, to impacts. To be safe, we took a sample and screened it to determine if there might have been, there wasn't. So it was my professional judgment that no additional samples need to be required.
Did you take the sample right near the tank, like right at the surface?
At the surface of the tank, yes.
I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's right. I, I believe you dug down to the, uh, to the bedrock and then took the sample.
We might have taken a sample of bedrock, but it was screened. Usually you screen it from surface down to where do you have refusal, which is bedrock. So that whole soil column was looked at.
That wasn't indicated at all in the report. You took a sample at, at some?
Objection. He's testifying and testifying as to his interpretation of photos in the Phase One and what he believes he's reading in the report. He's asked him questions and he's answered the question.
Um, I'd like to, I know, I noticed that, that you, you rendered many of the areas of concern, no further investigation required, and took no soil samples based on the photoionization detector result. Is that right?
Well, based on many things, but one of them is a photoionization detector, yes.
Okay. And help me understand, when was that photoionization detector calibrated? It, it sounds like a picky question, but the reason I ask is that so, so much is, so much rides on that one instrument.
Objection. You're not testifying. He's the witness.
Ask the question, ask the question. If you want to ask a subsequent question, ask a subsequent question. It is not a requirement that you ask three questions in the same question.
Got it.
Photoionization detectors are calibrated the day that you use them. So you, generally what happens, the morning that you take it out, you turn it on, you let it warm up, and then you calibrate it. That's standard procedure.
Uh, is there a record of that calibration?
Yes.
And where is that record?
That would be in the field books of the field technician.
But not in the report?
No, it doesn't need to be in the report, no.
So you're confident that the, that those procedures, do you have the name of the person that did that calibration?
I do not know who was in the field that day, but I could look that up when I get back to my office. But yes, that's standard operating procedure. People are very trained, are trained in how to do that, and I'm very confident that that was done correctly.
And, and what's the calibration gas that they use?
Isobutylene.
Did, I'd like to ask some questions about the Phase Two report. Is that, did you read that one?
I saw those data, yes.
Okay. So in many cases, and I'll, I'll give a, a very specific one, test pit number four. The, the you took a sing, there was a, there was a single sample test taken. And, you know, you screened it with the, with the, with the PID and determined that it was not, you know, no, no sampling had to be done.
I'm sorry, are you reading from the Phase Two or the preliminary assessment?
Phase Two.
I guess as you're using the Phase Two and referring to anything in there that you wanted to ask a question on, please show them the document and what it says.
I thought you would have a copy of the document.
Just let me say again, a Phase Two is not an official NJDP document, okay? That is a, similar to the Phase One, and that is a, is a due diligence type of
Sure.
document. So there's no requirement to delineate, to take a sample. It's, it's a way of getting a better snapshot of the site before, for example, a person would like to purchase the property or things like that.
So, so you wouldn't have any obligation if it was, if there was a recommendation in that report to, to follow any of those recommendations?
The responsible party, which would be generally the owner of the property, does have an affirmative obligation to clean up anything that was found during a Phase Two investigation. And I believe one of those samples in the Phase Two was above standard, and the property owner correctly called in a spill and a spill number was generated. So yes, the obligation is on the property owner to affirmatively remediate the property.
Right. But as the LSRP, if you have a report, official or not, wouldn't you have an obligation based on your, based on your role as an LSRP? You wouldn't have an obligation even though it's your firm? Is that right? Even though it's your firm suggesting that you take a groundwater sample, you wouldn't have an obligation to do that?
Absolutely not. And the LSRP's obligation is to be protective of human health and the environment. So as an LSRP, a record, if I found something that I believe was detrimental to human health in the environment, I have an obligation to report it. As a non-LSRP, a record, so when a Phase Two is done, there's no need for an LSRP. The LSRP does not have an obligation to report that. The person responsible for the remediation, the property owner, has the obligation to report.
I'm not, I'm not asking about the obligation to report. I'm asking about the obligation to investigate based on suspected contamination that your own firm discovered.
No, I, that's like saying, you know, if somebody gave me a report at your house and it was contamination, then I should go on and investigate it. The property owner has the obligation to investigate it using an LSRP once contamination is found. The LSRP does not have obligations to just investigate contamination.
Interesting. So you don't have, if, if there's something that indicates that there's contamination, something that you see or some document, some report that was done a while ago, that doesn't give you an obligation to investigate it?
No, no, I don't, I can't investigate somebody's property that they haven't retained me to investigate.
I'm not, you've been retained to investigate this property. So that's not the question.
Once I was retained,
Yeah.
we investigated the property, then the obligation's there. The LSRP doesn't have an obligation. The responsible party, the person responsible for the remediation, which is generally the owner of the property, is the responsible party to clean it up. Their responsibility is to retain an LSRP who then performs the investigation or remediation.
I, I, I wasn't asking about who has the obligation to do a remediation. I was asking who has, that, I was asking about your obligation as an LSRP to investigate all areas of concern, all areas of suspected contamination. And I'm just trying to understand, so I'm, I'm hoping I can make this into a question. So are you, am I hearing you correctly that even though there's a report with a photo, and the report was produced by your firm, that clearly shows that there's staining or, or that they looked at it or that Van Cleve found a test pit with odors of, of hydrocarbons, you don't, as the LSRP, don't have an obligation to investigate that?
No, I will repeat myself again. The obligation to investigate is the person responsible for the remediation, which is generally the property owner who is responsible. The, their responsibility includes retaining an LSRP who then takes over the investigation and is responsible for following regulations in that investigation and remediation. I, if somebody hands me a report that says there's 5,000 ppm of PCB on your property, I don't have an obligation to, to, to investigate your property. You have the obligation to investigate your property.
But if I hire you?
Then my obligation is to investigate per regulations. You're still the person responsible for the remediation.
Right. But as the LSRP, aren't you responsible to look in areas that have, that could be potential contamination?
Yes, that's what a preliminary assessment does, and that's what we did.
Okay. And those didn't include the areas that were identified by your firm?
They included the areas that were identified during the preliminary assessment. Some of those areas identified in the Phase Two were investigated. There was contamination. They were called in, and they became part of the case. Okay? The LSRP's obligation is to perform, in this case, a preliminary assessment and determine where additional investigation has to go.
So it sounds like you didn't even read the Phase One report. You did read the Phase Two report, though, I'm hearing. Is that right?
Well, I looked at the data from the Phase Two.
You looked at the, you didn't read the report?
I did not read the whole report.
Okay. And yet you feel confident that what you did was an appropriate preliminary assessment?
Absolutely.
Interesting. Okay. In, on page 21 of your preliminary assessment report, you talk about ecological receptors. Can you, can you share with us a little bit more about, you talk about Royce Brook, and then you say, potential contaminant migration pathway identified is groundwater exposure through subsurface utilities. What do you mean by that?
In other words, if subsurface utilities in the area, you know, they're, they're not as tight, right, as like the, the ground is, so, because they have, a utility goes through, it's usually surrounded by stone or something like that. It'll be a preferential pathway from groundwater to go to, to where the, wherever the utility leads.
So are you saying that the pathway would be to the Royce Brook?
No, what we're saying is, is based on the initial findings, there's no indication that there's a pathway from, from the surface to groundwater. that there's a pathway from the surface to groundwater. The only pathway that could happen is through utility corridors, but groundwater is 45 feet below ground. Utility corridors are shallow. So what this is saying is that there's no indication at this time that there's a pathway to groundwater.
So you're saying that if there was contamination in the soil, that there's no way that that contamination could get to groundwater?
Now, this is an initial receptor evaluation. So at this time, there's no indication that that contamination could get to groundwater. What happens in these reports is as you continue the investigation, you update these receptor evaluations. So for example, if we determine that we need to acquire groundwater samples, and we find contamination to groundwater, the receptor evaluation is updated to include that now there's a potential receptor to groundwater.
So what did you base your conclusion on, that there isn't a pathway from soil that, and you have a leachate from the soil, you know, or I don't know if that's the right word, but rain goes on the soil, it leaches out the contaminants and goes to groundwater? Isn't that a pathway to groundwater? Or where else does the water go?
It's not a pathway to contamination. You're taking the initial receptor evaluation from preliminary assessment out of context. This is an initial receptor evaluation based on a preliminary assessment. So the law requires that receptor evaluations be updated each time a new phase of investigation is completed. So for example, once remedial investigation is completed, and the remedial investigation has to be completed, the receptor evaluation will be updated to determine if there is or isn't a pathway.
Yeah, but you said no further investigation is warranted
Of this pathway.
Due to the lack of pathways.
Correct.
So you're saying that there isn't a pathway of soil to groundwater? And where does the water go, then? If it doesn't go to groundwater, where does it go?
Goes to surface water. It runs off.
So is that a pathway from soil runs off to surface water? Is that a pathway?
Could be a pathway, sure. To surface water.
And so why didn't you include that in your receptor, ecological receptor? Because there is a Royce Brook going through here.
Yeah, we say it right there.
But you then said there's no further investigation is warranted.
This is for groundwater. We're not talking about surfaces, groundwater exposure.
So you're saying that the leachate from the soil could not get to groundwater?
We're saying at this time, there's no indication that there's a pathway, okay? This gets updated with each successive investigation.
And what would be the indication that there is a pathway?
Groundwater contamination, if there is so.
So you made this conclusion without taking any groundwater samples?
This conclusion is an initial receptor evaluation. The law requires that once there is a case, such as an ISRA case or something like that, an initial receptor evaluation. It's a snapshot of receptors and what's happening there. That gets updated. So yes, the initial conclusion is, there's no pathway to groundwater for contamination.
Based on not taking any samples, though?
Yes, correct. Once samples are acquired, if they need to be acquired, that will be updated.
It sounds like no further investigation is warranted, though.
For this report, no further investigation is warranted. This is an initial receptor evaluation. This changes. Okay? I don't know how I could be any clearer. This is an initial receptor evaluation.
Okay. And then how about the receptor evaluation of contaminants flowing over the ground into, flowing over, you know, leaching through the soil and getting into the Royce Brook?
That will be addressed in the next receptor evaluation
Okay.
once we complete the investigation.
But you didn't address that in this report?
That doesn't, this is an initial receptor evaluation. Okay? This is different. This is the snapshot of what was going on then. Once we have data, then we determine if there's other receptors being affected. It's just the process, right? It goes everything. I don't know why you're confused, but that's just the process.
I'm confused. I'm curious as to why the Royce Brook wouldn't be part of your initial receptor evaluation since it was right there. It's not a new thing. It's an existing condition.
It's there. Initially, we said we don't believe that there's a receptor, you know, it's a receptor
Okay.
for contamination. Again, that gets updated with each successive report.
Although what you said is no further investigation is warranted, so.
Objection. We're going over the same thing over and over.
That's fine.
The report says what it says. He's given the answer.
I'm finished. That's fine. I'm finished.
Check for four. John, your number four.
Name, Mr. Lannahan?
John Lannahan, objector number four.
Move closer, the mic closer, Mr. Lannahan. No, closer.
Is that better? It's not on.
There we go.
There you go.
Thank you. Push the button. Little instructions might help. In the planning board documents, they talk about a Phase 2 assessment report, but it appears to be a summary. Am I reading that correctly, that the Phase 2 was completed?
A Phase 2 is just a minor additional investigation during due diligence. There's no such thing as a Phase 2 report, regulation-wise.
So in the letter, on June 2022, there's no date on the letter, just June 2022, talks about the results of the Phase 2 site assessment. There's no report that follows that? It's just this letter summarizing it? Okay. So we need to have that clarity. So we won't see a Phase 2 report. We'll just see the summary.
No, there's really no such thing as a Phase 2 report.
Got it.
Regulatory parlance.
Got it. That was all my questions. Just wanted to get the clarity. Thanks.
Yep. Okay, may I have a motion?
Do I get a follow-up?
You want to follow up?
Sure.
And reopen, and that's up to you?
Well, it's redirect. It's responding to questions they asked. I don't think it reopens up to them.
Ah, yes, it does. Re-cross.
Yeah, we could play that game all night. Re-cross, redirect, re-cross, redirect. It's usually direct, cross, redirect.
Mr. Giannetti, it's not a game. It's no different than it would be in court. You want to re-question your client, it reopens it up to the objectors before it opens up to the public. Your call. It's up to you. Or do you want to wait until after everybody's done and then deal with it? It's your call.
I'm fine.
Okay. May I have a motion to open the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, if there's anyone from the public who's not represented by one of the objectors, feel free to come up to the microphone, state your name and address, and ask questions of the witness's testimonial, please.
Here's another if you need it.
David Brooks, Seven Winding Way.
And can you also just testify that you are not represented by any of the objectors or members of any of the groups that they represent?
That's correct.
No, no, you state that.
I'm not being represented by any of the objectors.
And you're not a member?
And I'm not a member, and I'm here as
So you're not a member of SWAT?
No.
Just for the record, because you seem to be an advocate for that.
I'm a resident who lives nearby the site, not within 200 feet, but not much farther. Mr. Robinson, just a few basic questions. How long have you been licensed as an LSRP?
Since the beginning of the program, I want to say 2009.
Is it correct to state that you conform all of your work to the many requirements of being an LSRP?
Yes.
Could you explain how NJAC 726I applies as to your ethical requirements as an LSRP?
I'm not really sure of that regulation.
Mr. Brooks, I guess I already can see Mr. Giannetti. Just going to lean in. Please, your questions to his testimony, you're not qualifying him as a witness.
No, it's just a background, so I can understand.
But you're here as public, and that's to ask questions of his testimony, not to determine his qualifications at this point.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Brooks, quickly succinctly explain what the section in the New Jersey Administrative Code is, and ask your question from that, and not whether or not he's familiar, because if he tells you he's not familiar, you're going to have to move on.
It relates to establishing what the highest priority is of an LSRP, and I think Mr. Robinson may have indicated that prior.
Right, to protect human health and the environment.
Correct, thank you. And with regards to your work as an LSRP, have you ever communicated with the LSRP Board for anything other than routine licensing requirements?
No.
Okay. And have you ever been the subject of a professional disciplinary proceeding?
No.
Okay, so you deal with the DEP tech regs, correct?
Correct.
And you follow the DEP tech regs, is that correct?
Correct.
Can you explain to the Board and the public just basically what the tech regs are, so they can have a little bit of an understanding of what is guiding you?
Tech regs are just the way we perform environmental investigation or remediation in the state. Simple as that.
Okay, and they set the standards for how you would conduct an investigation. Is that also correct?
Those are the standards that are set, and also through guidance.
Okay. And you may have answered this, but I wasn't clear. The Phase 1 site assessment report, you played no role in, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The Phase 2 is not really a report, so it's really the preliminary assessment site investigation report that provides the meat of what you've been doing?
The preliminary assessment report is the initial report that's required through the ISRA process. I explained that in my testimony last month, the whole ISRA
Okay.
process.
Just out of curiosity, when was the last time you conducted any site investigation work on the property?
When was this last done? In 2022, around June 2022.
Is there a reason why, if you're conducting an investigation, you have not been on the property since?
We have timeframes that we can, that we have to complete the investigation, and you know, we're within those timeframes, so we're planning to complete the investigation, but there's no reason other than it hasn't been done yet.
The timeframe, I believe, is a number of years. Is that correct?
Correct, September 2025.
I'm just a little bit curious as to, if you are conducting an investigation, would it not make sense to continue that if you have questions at this point?
It depends on my client, the property owner, what's happening at the site. There's no regulation that says you have to conduct, you know, continue conducting an investigation within a certain timeframe. There's just regulations are required, it has to be completed by a certain date.
Okay, thank you. On August 26, 2022, an authorization to submit a report form through DEP online was filed, signed by John Shockley. Did you assist with the filing of this form?
Objection. There's no exhibit that's been entered showing this form. But if he's going to show you the document that he's referring to?
Well, it's in the preliminary assessment. I have a copy.
Show it to Mr. Giannetti.
You need to clarify what you mean assisted with that document. That's a very simple document that he allows me to submit the document online. That's all that that form is.
Well, I guess my question is, your name and signature is on here for
Not on that document. Not on the authorization to submit document. It's not.
I just see your, here, let me just, sorry. I mean, maybe this is not all the same document, but this is all just from the record.
Mr. Brooks, you're going to
Yeah, so this is, this first document is called the authorization. Now, explain it. It's good to know. This is called the authorization to submit. So what this tells me, this tells Mr. Shockley, I need to submit a document. Everything's done online. He's signing an affidavit that says, yes, you can submit it. This is the cover certification form, which kind of goes through what I'm submitting. It's different than the authorization form. So yes, my signature is on this.
Thank you. On page 2 of this report, there was a checkoff for spill act discharge. Do you know what that spill act discharge related to?
Yes, that was during the initial Phase 2 investigation in, I believe it was, in the test pits during the geotechnical investigation. There were odors that were identified, the geotech engineer, so samples were acquired. Beryllium mercury and silver were detected above the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Migration of Groundwater Standards. So DEP was notified, and the case was called in. That's what the spill act is.
And was there any action taken after the call to deal with this spill?
Yeah, that's when the site investigation occurs.
No, I guess I'm curious as to any chemical compounds that would be found if this was classified as a spill. Was it drummed up? Was it removed?
No, that's not how the classification goes. Spill act is just a law in the state of New Jersey that says if you have contamination above standard, it has to be reported and dealt with. It's not necessarily a drum being spilled over.
No, I'm sorry. I probably didn't answer the question properly. If you identify material that is classified as requiring a call to the DEP as a spill, it's no different than spilling gasoline or oil on the ground. You just don't let it sit there. And my question is, did anybody act to remediate, to clean it up, and to put it into a drum?
No, it is different. Okay? If you spill gasoline on the grounds, it has to be cleaned up. That could be an immediate environmental hazard. Just because it's called a spill in the nomenclature doesn't mean it was a spill. It meant that soil contamination was above the migration of groundwater for these compounds. So then this becomes part of the whole process of the site investigation, remedial investigation, and remedial action. Again, those timeframes, as we discussed before, have to be completed. The remedial investigation or remediation has to be completed within those timeframes.
Okay.
So it just calls, it's not really a spill because it's called a spill.
Thank you. Within this report, there is a Section C description of contamination. There's a soil migration pathway number two. It indicates, "Has soil contamination been delineated to the applicable direct contact soil remediation standard pursuant to 726E-4.2?" And there's a no indication there. I'm assuming that's correct.
Correct.
And then the next question is, "Are all soils either below the applicable direct contact criteria or under an institutional control, i.e. deed notice?" That's also marked no.
Correct.
Okay. Is that still correct?
Yeah. So this form that you're looking at, the cover certification form, that's for all different phases of the investigation or remediation. So for example, once remediation's completed, all those should probably be yes, right? Because it's either been cleaned up or capped or whatever. But in this initial phase, which was the preliminary assessment site investigation, most of those are going to be no, because we haven't, things haven't been completed yet.
So is this suggesting that you cannot utilize an institutional control because it's
No. All it's suggesting is a snapshot at the time.
Okay.
What that form does is that informs the DEP when they're reviewing it. So for example, if it said, yes, everything's cleaned up to below standard, the DEP reviewer might go in and say, well, let me look at those pages to make sure this is correct.
Okay.
What this is telling the DEP is there's still more investigation that needs to be done.
And then Section D says groundwater use. Have all potentially contaminated areas Have all potentially contaminated areas of concern been evaluated to determine if there is a potential that groundwater is contaminated pursuant to NJAC 726E-3.5? The answer is yes. Is that correct?
I have to see that.
Can you show them the document?
Yeah.
Has this document been previously marked?
Well, Mr. Robinson, you can confirm, is this document part of the preliminary assessment?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't know the number.
Yes, so what this says is that, have we looked at potential groundwater contamination? The answer is yes. So then the next question is, is groundwater, is groundwater investigation required? And we say yes, okay? And then the next one is, has it been completed? You say no, because it hasn't.
Okay, so, so has the groundwater investigation been conducted? The answer is no.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So if I may, go back to the preliminary assessment site investigation report. There are different areas of concern that are identified within it. That's also from August of 2022. And one of those is AOC 25, which is groundwater. In there, it stated, let me get it, make sure I read it. This is on page 17 of the PASI 22226, AOC 25 groundwater. Groundwater at the site was investigated during the historic environmental investigation, AOC 23. No impacts were identified, no additional investigation is required. Mr. Pasoro might have asked that question, but what are we talking about with regards to the historic environmental investigation, AOC 23? Was that the 1990 or was there something?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Maybe you can help clarify here, because your disclosure says a groundwater investigation needs to be conducted. And then, under the report, it says that you don't need to conduct a groundwater investigation.
At this time, correct. Correct. So, so during the preliminary assessment, there was no indication that groundwater needs to be investigated based on the historic stuff. However, once a site investigation is started and the remedial investigation is completed, groundwater may need to be investigated. So that's why that says yes.
I, I guess my question is that there's 33 years that have transpired between that report and now. Why would one rely upon a 33-year-old report to identify whether there's an issue with groundwater?
Again, it's data that was there. As we complete the remedial investigation, I believe I testified this last month, groundwater may need to be investigated, okay? We have to complete the soil investigation to determine that.
Okay. Now, are you personally familiar with any contaminated wells on this property?
I am not.
Are you aware that Mr. Shockley had a contaminated well that was abandoned in 1993?
Yes.
You just said, no, you're not.
You said at the property, it's not at the property anymore, it's been abandoned.
All right. I'm sorry, I, I think we're splitting hairs here. I'm asking you that, so you're, you're now stating that you are aware of a contaminated well that was abandoned. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know what the well was contaminated with?
I do not.
Did you see the Health Department note about rechecking for chromium?
The well was abandoned, so it's hard to recheck for a well that was abandoned.
I think they were referring to the new well.
Before, before you move on, Mr. Giannetti, I've got board members who are giving looks at, there's been, looks like they're prompting, coming from behind the witness, from whomever. Can we have the witness sort of focus in on...
I'm sorry, prompt, oh, understood.
Thank you.
Luckily we're hearing that.
You can't hear something, Mr. Robinson, ask for it to be repeated.
Sorry, Mr. Brook.
When you conducted the investigation, did you obtain Health Department information as it related to the well contamination and then the construction of the septic system?
No, we had the construction of the septic system, but not the well information.
So you wouldn't know whether this note, and I can show it to you if you would like to see it, from the Health Department, that says recheck chromium prior to issuance of CO? As to whether they're talking about hexavalent chromium or any other type?
Again, can you show them this document you're referring to?
I, I am not sure whether the Board has this, simply because this was in a number of papers that, as I went through, I saw there was some information in the record as it related to it, but I, I can't say for sure. This is dated March 20, 1993, it's all handwritten.
May I see it before you even hand it to Mr. Giannetti? Well, why don't you go back, because I have a couple of questions for you before we even mark it or ask for the questions? If the Board will allow, if the Board will allow me. Mr. Brook, you provided me with five pages of a document, is that correct?
Yes.
Where did you acquire this document and when?
To the best of my knowledge, I acquired it through an Open Public Records Act request of the Health Department, or filed through the township, for all records that related to 189 Homestead Road.
Can you indicate when you received this document as part of your Oprah request?
I believe May 20, 2022, I, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to mark the document unofficially as P1 and P is public, so that no one is confused, what it usually is used. I will ask Mr. Brook to recover his document, show it to Mr. Giannetti before, and I would request that this document be provided tomorrow to the Planning Office, so that it can be provided to the Board, to Mr. Giannetti, to the other objectors, and for the record. Mr. Giannetti, do you think you're going to need a couple of minutes to go over this with your client?
With my witness, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, it might make perfect time to take a break.
Yep, it's just past 8:30, we'll reconvene quarter of. Before we start up, I just want to just, you know, make a note that we're going to go until 10:10 tonight, just because we got a little bit of a late start, so, yes, sir.
And also just a friendly reminder for our person offsite who's recording, if you could just make sure that you're speaking into all the microphones, thank you.
So I should, okay. So, Mr. Brook, we're going to swear you in because you're submitting evidence. Mr. Bernstein?
Testimony, you're about to give truth, all truth, only about truth self you got, Mr. Brook?
Yes.
State your full name, spell your last name and your address.
David Brook, B.R.O.O.K., 7 Winding Way.
Just for purposes of recapping the record, Mr. Brook, we are dealing with an exhibit we have tentatively marked as P1, which according to your prior comments was a, were documents that you obtained pursuant to an Oprah request to the Township back in, you believe, May of '22.
That's correct, Mr. Bernstein, and I will check and provide all of that information back to the Planning Department tomorrow.
Thank you.
And I want to clarify one thing, if I may. The first page of this document comes from the posted appendices from the PA, actually from the Phase 1, that's 663-page report. It's page, page 25, I think, within that 113 pages. And that, and I think also page 9 from that 113 pages is, is in this information. The other information is from the Oprah. And I, I will just forward the information to the Planning Board tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Giannetti, you had a chance to show this to your client.
Yes, well, to the extent, the first page, and we can't confirm whether it's in his report or not. If he wants to ask him about that, that's fine, but I'm going to object to him trying to get in evidence through our witness when they will have an opportunity to have their public comment and use evidence at this point.
I've just marked it preliminary P1, it doesn't go into evidence until, and any more than your exhibits have gone into evidence, or anyone else's, until testimony is complete on all sides.
Mr. Robinson, just to go back over the well that was abandoned due to contamination on Mr. Shockley's property. You're, you've stated you are aware of that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know the depth of the replaced well on Mr. Shockley's property?
No.
Okay. For the record, it was 120 feet. Do you know the depth of the replaced well for Mr. Shockley, which I believe is on here also?
No.
Okay, and for the record, it was 270 feet deep.
Objection, the witness is testifying again, using a document that's not in evidence. And I guess, to be clear when asking the witness question 2 of, you know, whether there's a well contaminated, it's whether he's aware there's a report of a well contaminated.
He can ask the question, does he know whether the well was contaminated? Your client can answer accordingly, and depending upon his answer, that will leave Mr. Brook with where he wants to go with the next question. As to his testimony on the depth, I would ask him to please wait in terms of that kind of information until such time as he makes whatever presentation he is going to make, unless Mr. Robinson happens to know the depth. If he does, he can answer, if he doesn't, he can't.
Thank you.
You know this.
Mr. Robinson, do you know any information about the aquifer or aquifers that underlay Mr. Shockley's property?
I do not.
Okay. Now, you made a statement a little earlier about the nearest potable well being some distance away. Do you remember what you said?
I do not.
I believe you said it was about a mile away. Do you recall that?
I do not.
And I don't believe that was his testimony.
Do you recall saying it was a half a mile away?
I think I said it was probably within a half a mile, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Now, you've looked at the property where Mr. Shockley is. Have you looked at either aerials or have you traveled through the different neighborhoods with regards to proximity properties to Mr. Shockley?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
I, I'm asking if you have had the opportunity to understand the lay of the land and to understand any adjoining properties to this proposed development.
To what means?
To what means, simply to understand how close the nearest neighbor is, where the stream is, what other physical attributes are adjacent to the property.
Objection, objection. If he can ask one question at a time, and also object to the question of being vague of understanding the lay of the land, if he has specific questions as to what he looked at, he can ask it and the witness can answer it.
Why don't we, why don't we try that, Mr. Brook?
Thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Okay, have you had an opportunity to identify the natural features that exist on the proposed development? Natural feature number one would be the Royce Brook.
Again, I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking, but yes, we have looked at the natural feature.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, with your two eyes, were you able to see an adjacent stream to the property? I, in other words, called the Royce Brook?
In the preliminary assessment, the Royce Brook was identified.
Okay. In the, you've been on the property, correct?
Correct.
Have you walked the property physically?
Yes.
Okay, so you can appreciate the property is higher than many other adjacent properties, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. When you did this, were you, what, what time of year were you out there? Do you recall? Was it in the wintertime or was it in the summertime?
It was in the spring summertime.
Okay, were all the trees leafed out?
I do not remember.
So in your viewing of the property, were you able to see any adjacent houses or other structures to this particular section?
Objection. It's irrelevant, and it doesn't have to do with any of his testimony as to his preliminary assessment of environmental contamination investigation on this property.
And I would respond...
I made an objection.
That's fine, and I would respond by saying that there is the need to understand proximity to adjacent properties. Again, that's his opinion.
Mr. Brook, I'm just going to ask, just please ask questions, don't, you know, no interjections.
Mr. Robinson, do you, do you know how far away the houses and property lines are on the Winding Way section to Mr. Shockley's property?
No.
Okay. Did you examine the property ownership when you looked at your work as an LSRP?
Yes, as part of preliminary assessment.
And when you looked at the property delineations, were you aware of adjacent privately owned properties?
Objection. Again, I don't know why we're talking about adjacent residences.
If you can answer it, yes. If you can't answer it, let's move on.
But it's irrelevant.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean by aware. Yes, I know there's adjacent properties.
Okay. When you did your investigation, you listed in the reports, maybe in the PASI, that a listing, well, let me rephrase. I do not believe that you listed it, but in the report, there is a listing of all adjacent potable wells. Is that correct? Is that proper? Correct. Okay. Do you know by looking at that, there was a map that showed adjacent potable wells? Do you recall that map?
Yes.
Yes. And are you aware that all homes on Winding Way are served by private potable personal wells?
Objection, assumes facts not in evidence.
There's a map?
I'm aware that there are potable wells, every resident? I don't know.
I have an objection, so don't answer.
When we were talking about groundwater, you're familiar with groundwater, correct? The, the, the reality of groundwater, you understand that?
Is that a question?
Do you understand that groundwater moves?
Let's try another one.
Are you aware that groundwater is not static and that it moves in different directions?
Objection again.
Not part of his testimony.
Understood. Mr. Robinson, we were talking about some of the technical regs that govern your work. Are you familiar with... Care with me a moment. Are you familiar with, uh, we'll find it in a minute, bear with me a moment. Are you aware of NJAC 7:26E 3.5 and what it states?
Uh, no, I'm not familiar exactly what that regulation is. If you show it to me, I can tell you.
Well, how about if I just read the portion here? It's site investigation as it relates to groundwater, and it states, A, the person responsible for conducting the remediation, who is subject to conducting a site investigation, shall evaluate all potentially contaminated areas of concern to determine if there is a potential that groundwater has been contaminated. Now, I know you haven't done that yet. Do you intend to conduct a groundwater investigation at this time?
If the data show, as I've testified many times, that it's necessary to conduct a groundwater investigation, we will conduct a groundwater investigation per the requirements.
Based upon what you know of the contaminated well that was sealed at Mr. Shockley's, do you, and your professional expertise, do you believe there is the potential that groundwater has been contaminated on the property that you're investigating?
Until I complete my investigation, I do not know if groundwater is contaminated or not.
May I ask this slightly differently? If Mr. Shockley's well was contaminated, did it make the contamination of the groundwater go away when it was sealed?
I really can't answer that, I don't know. That's a conjecture.
All right, and, Mr. Brook, again, I don't believe he was, he ever testified to that point.
Well, he testified he was aware of the well that was contaminated at Mr. Shockley's. I just wanted to follow.
I think he was aware of the document that he was referring to.
I was aware of the well that was sealed.
Now, you also mentioned that a number of the soil samples that you took had contaminants that exceeded the migration to groundwater standards, is that correct?
That is correct.
Does that indicate that there is the potential for those contaminants to enter the groundwater?
Until I complete the remedial investigation, I do not know if a groundwater investigation is necessary.
You may have answered this, so I will apologize. Did you say when you were going to be conducting that continuation of the investigation?
We don't know yet.
Okay. I'm going to apologize again, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Bernstein. I have another document which I would like to show to everybody. I do believe it came out of the information that's been provided in the record, but at this point, I can't say when. I believe it's from the 1990 report. It is a topographic map of a portion of the property.
Where did you, where did you obtain it?
I believe it is in one of the reports that has been submitted by the applicant, and it is dating to 1989. It is a plot plan for Mr. Shockley's property or a portion thereof, put together by geotechnical engineers.
I'm going to again object, unless he can specifically identify where in the report it is. And again, this is not his case in chief. The public will have an opportunity to give public comment and introduce whatever exhibits they want to introduce. They don't have the right to do it through my witnesses.
I can either discuss it, or I can show this.
You're not going to be able to, because you haven't been able to.
Okay, so.
I'm also going to say no coaching from the, from the box, because I know we already said it on one side, so, sorry.
Understood, he just wanted to see it. I'll just start off this way. In 1989, a plot plan was prepared.
Objection.
Ask a question.
Okay.
Related to the testimony.
Correct. So, Mr. Robinson, you indicated that you have been walking on the property at some point when you conducted this investigation, that's correct? Yes?
Yes.
Did you notice that when you were on the property, there's a rather steep portion facing to the east that slopes dramatically down towards the, towards the Royce Brook and also towards a flat, lower elevation piece of property?
I'm familiar that the property was higher up, I'm not sure exactly what location you're asking about.
It would be the eastern portion along the boundary of the property, eastern portion. Did you ever conduct any examination of that portion to determine why the area is such a steep slope, and whether that was filled or not?
Again, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking.
I'm asking you whether you believe historic fill was brought onto the property in order to fill that elevation difference.
Yeah, there is no indication that fill was brought onto the property, according to our discussion with the property owner, I believe the area you're talking about was used for them to go to the lower fields.
And in the, in, in one of the reports, there are a number of aerials that are provided through time. Are you familiar with those aerials that show the properties going from about 1939 to about 2017?
Yes.
And did you have an opportunity to look at those aerials?
Yes.
When you look at the 1939 up until about 1989, did you notice that the area on the eastern side is gradually sloped? And after 1989, it's not?
I'm going to object again, he's testifying as to the exhibit. He can ask our witness about the aerial and what it's telling him, not what the objector believes it is in trying to get it in through our witness.
Sustained.
I'm simply asking about changes of elevation.
No, Mr. Brook, you're asking about change of elevation based on timeframes. You want to talk to him about the change of elevation that he knows about, you can ask him. Unless you can get him to tell you he knows the difference in the elevation between 1989 and another date, then you can't ask him about the dates.
All right, I'm going to ask if you can refer to page 6 of, is that 14? Page 38, Appendix A, from the environmental assessment? From the, from the environmental impact statement 1. It's on page, it's page 38.
By the way, Mr. Pizarro, the prompting also includes you.
Sorry.
You know, object, he did not prepare the environmental impact statement.
He can still look at it.
It's not, it's not based on his testimony. His testimony is about the preliminary assessment, he's the LSRP, and about remediation. Elevation changes and anything else is, has nothing to do with his testimony.
For the record, that.
No, no, your, your time is done. No, your time is done, sir. You go try.
Okay, Mr. Pizarro, I'll put you into the penalty box.
Let us not quote contaminant, close both the record with multiple people talking. Mr. Brook?
Okay. Mr. Robinson, none of your AOCs in the PASI discuss historic fill on the side of the property, is that correct?
Correct.
Are you familiar with 726E 3.12?
Sure I am, if you read what it says.
Now, that relates to site investigations of historic fill material. And I will read that simply. If historic fill material is suspected to be present on a site, then the person responsible for conducting the remediation, who is subject to, again, the site investigation, shall determine whether historic fill material is present. Are you familiar with that section now?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Excuse me. Yes, the site is not mapped as an historic fill area. So unless we have reason to believe through investigation that historic fill is present, which so far we have not, based on test pits and other things, there's no obligation to perform a historic fill evaluation.
Now, again, you've been on the property. When you stand on the eastern portion, would you say that the slope that you're standing on is natural?
Objection, objection, objection.
Sustained.
One of the AOCs that you've identified in your report, which is AOC 15, landscape company tank storage, and you indicate nothing further to be done there. Were you ever, did you ever ask what is stored in those tanks?
Of course, we always ask.
Can you recall what you were told?
I do not.
In the, just going back to the receptor, what's the right term for it? This is the authorization form that we were talking about previously, that you looked In Section F, it says ecological receptors. Has an ecological evaluation been conducted? NJAC 726E-1.6, you indicated yes, and there is a date for, I'm sorry, April 5, 2022. Do you know if that report has been filed with the township?
Uh, no, it hasn't. It was submitted to the DEP. There's no requirement to submit to the township. So, as far as the record, it's, it should be included with the preliminary assessment, if that's what you're asking.
I guess my question is, has anybody in the public or the planning board seen this? This ecological evaluation?
Objection, objection. He can't testify as to what the planning board has seen.
Ask a direct question of his testimony.
And again, has the applicant submitted this as part of its submission to the township, this report?
Yes, it's submitted along with the preliminary assessment. Right. When you submit a report, you have to submit a receptor evaluation, which is a separate form and report that's submitted to the DEP along.
No, I'm not referring to the receptor evaluation. I'm talking about this ecological evaluation, this EE, dated April, I'm sorry, yeah, April 5, 2022. Has that been submitted?
I'll have to look at that.
Can you please show them the document?
Yes, so this is part of the preliminary assessment.
Thank you. But my question is, has that been submitted to the township in the application materials?
It's part of the preliminary assessment, it's not a separate report. It's within the preliminary assessment.
And you're pretty sure, because I apologize, I read the preliminary assessment.
Objection, Chairman, it's irrelevant.
Sustained, Mr. Brook.
Okay, if you're saying it's there, it's fine.
Stay focused, he said it's there.
Okay, very good. All right, one last question, or I should say, one last line of questioning, if you don't mind, Mr. Robinson. The tech regs again, 3.6, site investigations, okay? We indicated that you've been on the property. Would you, would you agree that the property is higher and that it flows, that's not the right term, let me rephrase that. Would you agree that this property on the eastern portion sits higher than the Royce Brook? Would you also agree that if a substance was spilled, that it would have the potential to flow downhill and get into the Royce Brook?
I can't make that conjecture.
Were you ever there on a rainy day?
I was not.
When you were out there, did you observe any eroded ruts in the slope of this, of that hill that sits there?
Uh, we did reserve, observe a pathway down to the lower fields that Mr. Shockley indicated was how they used to get to the lower fields. So, I, I don't know if it's a rut, or if it's for foot traffic, but there certainly is a pathway.
So would you agree that there is the potential for a material to make its way from on the top to the bottom to make it to the Royce Brook?
Objection, objection, objection. It's irrelevant, unless he has evidence that there was something that spilled and went down there, fine, but it's not addressed in his report. He's talked about the areas of concern, we're just going in circles at this point.
Okay, let's go back to Section 3.6 of the site investigation technical regs, and I will read it simply to you. Surface water and sediment. If there is a potential that surface water, meaning the Royce Brook, has been impacted by the site, the person responsible for conducting the remediation, who is subject to doing a site investigation, shall determine if there is any evidence that contamination from the site has reached the surface water. Mr. Robinson, have you ever conducted any investigation of the Royce Brook or its sediments to determine if there is any contamination of the surface water or the sediments?
No, because based on the preliminary assessment, we do not believe there was. If during the investigation that we're completing, that changes, we certainly will, but at this point, there's no indication.
With regards to the technical regs, at what point would you determine that there is a potential that surface water has been impacted? What, what drives your investigation to be able to determine that?
Once I complete the soil investigation, the data is reviewed to determine if there is any potential for surface water to be hit. I can't tell you right now, if concentration is X, we're going to do this, or if we find this, or that. The data will lead us to those conclusions.
Can you help explain to everyone how looking at the soil will help you get to make this determination about surface water impact?
Because.
I'm going to object. Basically, this whole line of questioning, and ask to move on to the next member of the public. He's the LSRP, he was asked to be brought to the board to testify as to the status of remediation and the investigation, which he's provide lengthy testimony on. All these questions have been irrelevant, and is, if they want to raise it with the DEP, raise it with the DEP. But he's provided his testimony as to the status of the investigation and the remediation. This is not the board to be going through each and every point as to, what are you going to do next? What do you think of this? What do you think of that? What if this spilled down that? It's just an inappropriate line of questioning, and frankly, it's just wasting time, which we have, which is limited, given the time constraints we're dealing with. And I would ask that the next member of the public be asked to come with questions.
Mr. Brook, if you have any direct questions of his testimony, please ask them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions that have not already been asked or asked by you or answered by the witness?
Mr. Robinson, earlier you were asked about a, I believe you were asked about a storm drain that is in a photograph in one of these reports.
Objection.
Is it in one of his reports that he provided testimony on? Because I, I will say that we, you've probably have had the most time at the podium, I'll call it.
And achieved the least amount.
Oh, that's speculation.
Well, that's your opinion, sir.
No, we're not, no, we're not getting into it. So, Mr. Brook, just stay focused and ask the question, okay? And if you don't know where it's coming from, then refrain from asking that question.
Are you familiar with the storm drain that was observed on the property, Mr. Robinson, during your touring?
I'm not sure. I remember a storm drain.
Would a photograph help refresh your memory?
Can I see the photograph? Okay. You have this back.
As it relates to this particular storm drain, were you ever able to identify where the storm drain drained to?
Not at, not at the moment. We have not determined that yet.
Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to question this witness testimony, please come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Rich Garman.
It's got to hold the button until it goes green.
Rich Garman, fifty-three Winding Way.
Just let go of the button after it turns green.
Here you go. You're good.
No, no.
All right, once again, you hear me? We're good? Rich Garman, fifty-three Winding Way.
Maybe you need to get closer.
A little closer.
Oh, man. Okay. Maybe we could start, just clarify something. We keep speaking about the site. It's two properties and two sites, one application. So we're talking about, you were asked, Mr. Robinson, about wells in proximity to the site. And you stated you think that, you know, maybe within a half a mile. I have a concern that John Shockley's home is there with a well. Wouldn't that concern you and wouldn't it be easy for you to test his well? And see if the contaminants have reached the well? And on the, that's on the twenty acre piece, I think it's one eighty-nine we're talking about. And then on the other piece, the sixty-eight acre piece, it wraps around another one acre home, said there also has a well. So there's well, well within a half a mile proximity. I'm going to tell you my personal well.
Objection.
Just ask a question.
Okay. Do you know how close my well is to the site?
I don't know your address, though.
Okay. Fifty-three Winding Way, I'm adjacent to John. For the record, I'll just state that well with is probably within two hundred yards
Objection.
of the contamination.
Objection.
How is it objection?
This is questioning, this is not for testimony. You'll have an opportunity to present.
All right, I'm confused. I'll just state for the record then, my well is well with.
Objection.
Can't even do that.
Okay, let me.
You'll have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, everyone, let me.
As soon as we can finish.
Counselor, counselor, I will conduct the meeting. No, I just want so everyone knows. This portion is only to ask the witness direct questions.
I got you.
Once all testimony is given.
So the open public forum.
Then you get to have a free for all to state, you know, what you, you know, what you think of the project.
Okay.
So, thank you.
As well as any testimony and evidence you can produce. Right.
Hi, I'm Vicki Schwartz, six oh seven Van Leeuck Court.
Can I get a little bit just closer because the microphone's not very good?
Sorry, I don't speak loudly. I'm Vicki Schwartz, six oh seven Van Leeuck Court. I wanted some clarification on some definitions about the arsenic contamination. You were saying that there are high levels in spots, but by, based on that, you decided that was not evidence of its use as a pesticide? Am I correct in that question?
Right. Excuse me. Right now, we do not have evidence that it was pesticide use.
The question that I have about that is, how is arsenic used as a pesticide or historically? How is it used as a pesticide? Would it be normally widespread distribution or would it be more a localized distribution? Because it's known to be toxic. But I know that, I'll just, for the record, say, I know that it's used in orchards.
Objection, you asked him a question, he can answer it.
Yeah, generally it was used in orchards, you're right.
Yes.
And it was sprayed in orchards. So, you know, and I don't know about Hillsborough, but in other locations where we've seen our orchards, it's generally distributed evenly throughout the area. It's not this point type of thing.
Okay, a couple more questions. Do you know what type of plants were in the locations where you found the higher levels of arsenic?
I do not.
Okay, and how important is it to know whether it was used as a pesticide or not, regardless of the level? Is that an important distinction?
It, it has to be remediated based on the level. There's different rules if it was from a historic pesticide usage, which generally are stringent as having to clean up, you know, just point source stuff. So to clean, it has to be cleaned up. So it's not really, I don't want to say it doesn't matter what it's from, but it has to be handled either way.
So either way, if you've got a high level, it's got to be cleaned up?
It's got to be addressed, correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Joe O'Connell, twenty White Meadow Road in Hillsborough. And just to clarify, because I know White Meadow Road is a fairly new development. My house is not. My house has been there for over two hundred years, so it's very much affected. My question is, should I be worried for my well? Because I am definitely downstream. I am, as the crow flies, within a half a mile of this. And there has been, on two occasions that I know of.
Objection.
Oh, sorry.
Seven question.
Well, I know the water has come like right by my well, through my front yard, so on its way down to the Royce Brook. In, in that capacity, I've seen it with my eyes.
Objection.
So I think that the water could come from there. Should I be worried with my well? Can it be, and all the other spills?
If the witness can answer the question, should he, she worried about the well related to the property and question, he can answer. Otherwise, everything else is irrelevant.
I can't answer the question whether you should be worried. What I, what I can say is that as we continue our investigation, if it becomes necessary to sample your well due to groundwater contamination, whatever, is fine. From regulation, your well certainly will be addressed. From a worry standpoint, I just can't answer.
Okay. And have there been, I mean, there was anecdotal things from neighbors. Has there been other spills, other things put on that property? Whether it was laid on to the property or spilled on to the property that could contain a lot of contaminants that would contaminate my well?
Yeah, I can't answer that.
Can there be testing done for, to see?
Testing is being, currently being done on the property to determine what additional things has, has to be done. So the property is being addressed through regulations to determine what's in there. And then we go from there. So if groundwater is impacted, we have to sample groundwater, we'll sample that. There's indication that some of the wells might have to be sampled, based on the data, then those wells certainly will be sampled according to regulation. I can't make any conjecture if something was spilled there or you have to worry about or things like that. I can just say that we're following the requirements.
And do you know what the concerns of the D P, the report that has not yet come back, apparently, that we're going ahead with all of this, even though, do you know what, what the D P's concerns were with this property?
I'm not sure I know what report you're talking about.
Well, I know.
That's, that's different than his preliminary, that's not subject to his testimony, the LSR P.
Okay, thank you.
Robert Harris, one thirteen Hunt Club Road. I'm not associated with any of these people. My question. One three Hunt Club Road. That's two words. My question relates to your testimony that the process that you're doing will, can go till two thousand and twenty-five?
Correct. So there's, the D P prescribes timeframes, called regulatory timeframes. So for this particular property, the site, the remedial investigation, figuring out what's out there is until September, two thousand and twenty-five. Then the remediation has, I think it's three years after that, until two thousand and twenty-eight. As I testified last time, the applicant really has, you know, no reason to want to slow things down. We don't have to wait for that time. We'll just go on.
So my, my question is, I understand that if you have contaminated property and it needs to be remediated, that timeframe might make sense. It seems the purpose here is to, is to help the planning board and the environmental commission decide whether this property is suitable for development as soon as possible. So how does that, how does that make sense?
Well, my purpose is.
First of all, before the question gets answered or doesn't get answered, for the purposes of the record, the deciding body as to this application is and will be the planning board. The environmental commission has no impact in making the decision. They are an advisory group, they give reports to the board, but let nobody be left with the impression the environmental commission is going to have any decision relative to the approval or denial of this application. Now, to the extent that Mr. Robinson can answer the question, which was, ask the question.
Well, I guess the question is, how does the, and maybe you can't answer this, but how does the planning board make an informed decision about the suitability of building a warehouse on this property if the investigation for remediation, which is, seems to be the only investigation as to the environmental suitability, is going to take three years plus?
I think I can answer that question.
You're right, I can't answer it.
So again, that's not a question for this, this witness. The, the, the D P has jurisdiction over determining whether sites are contaminated and how they're remediated. Planning board has jurisdiction over whether or not our, our application conforms with the township's site plan ordinance and zoning ordinance. And that's it. So whether a use is suitable for a site, the use as the zone stands as part of this application is a permitted use. And we'll have further testimony as to the conformity as to the site plan ordinance and zoning ordinance.
Thank you. I'll make the point that that's Mr. Giannetti's version of what this board's powers exist or don't exist. The board will address the application in the status it's in and deal with accordingly.
Any other members of the public?
Maria Janusik, seven twenty East Freck Avenue, Mandel, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, block eighty-six, lot three, two one five five, Camplain Road. So this application is, isn't one tract, it's two separate parcels of land. Yes?
Please ask a question of his testimony.
It's two lots, if that's what your question is.
It's two separate lots. So the contamination is on both lots?
The regulations only require that Mr. Shockley's property, one eighty-nine, is to be investigated due to the Industrial Site Recovery Act. Well, any other lot and blocks do not require investigation. Now, if we investigate Mr. Shockley's property and it turns out that we have to go off property to complete the investigation, we will. But right now, only one eighty-nine, which is block two hundred point one, lot thirty-three, excuse me, is subject to the requirements of the NJD P.
So the, the second lot that is going to be eventually combined, that lot doesn't have any contamination that, that.
I didn't say that. We, we're not, there's no requirement to investigate that based on the rules.
And so, and so what are the, what rules right now are requiring the, the property that you mentioned to be, to be investigated?
It's called the Industrial Site Recovery Act, ISRA, which requires when certain properties, depending on what was their, their performance was, what was, they were used for, once they sell or close down or a myriad of different things, required to go through this preliminary assessment, site investigation requirement. So because Mr. Shockley announced that he was interested in selling his property, that triggered this Industrial Site Recovery Act and started this whole process.
So any property that had previously been used, used for industrial purposes must be, must be investigated?
It depends on what the, the N A I C S code is. Sometimes people call it the S I C code. What they did on the property, the government gives certain codes to the operation. Mr. Shockley's use of the property triggered that code. So it is required to be addressed under the ISRA law. So it's not just industrial establishments have to be investigated, certain industrial establishments have to be investigated.
Okay. And this property has, I don't know if this was asked before I was here, has twenty-five areas of concern right now?
We identified twenty-five areas of concern, yes.
And so each of those areas of concern was investigated?
Some were, some did not require further investigation. Basically, the ISRA law has a long list of things you have to identify as areas of concern, such as a garbage dumpster, right? Doesn't mean it has to be investigated, just has to be identified and, and looked at, and then the determination is made whether additional investigations are required.
So is there any report showing each area of concern that was found?
Yes, that's the preliminary assessment report.
That's the preliminary assessment?
Yes.
And then there were five areas of concern that required additional investigation?
Correct.
That's part of those twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay, and so, and that's also in your report?
Correct.
Okay. The, does it say anywhere how this contamination originated?
No.
And, okay, so there's, there's no, no information as far as that?
Correct.
But there is information as to what the contaminants are?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, you don't see anyone else, so. David, you already had, you're done. No. You're not an objector, you're, you got one bite.
Nope.
Nope, sorry.
I have no further redirect, so I would ask that we go to our next witness, Ms. Cafone.
Please do. Actually, I think she just stepped out.
Oh. Oh.
Perfect. I'll go grab her, yeah. Thank you.
I think I've sworn the last one, right? I'm still under oath?
Yeah.
If you want to swear, bring it down.
Yep.
Just for the purposes of the record, Ms. Cofone, indicate who you are and your qualifications.
Of course. Good evening, Mr. Bernstein, Chair, and members of the board and the public. For the record, I am Christine Nazaro Cofone. I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I provided testimony on the subdivision application several months ago. My licenses are current and valid still, and that's it.
And you're still under oath?
I'm still, I haven't told any lies since the last hearing, I promise, still under oath.
And recall, Chairman, that Ms. Cofone's testimony was solely as to the minor subdivision. She will be called back again as a witness after the other witnesses testify, to testify as to the site plan and any relief being sought in connection with the site plan. In addition, Ms. Cofone was questioned by the objectors in what was discussed at the last meeting, that would now, and even questioned by members of the public, and that she will be continued to be questioned by members of the public.
Okay, so do I have to open back up?
Are we still, did we close the public portion?
No, we did not.
No, then we're still open.
Okay. So for those with really good memory, you can come up and question Ms. Cofone on her testimony from months ago. Please state your name and address for the record if you have any questions of Ms. Cofone's previous testimony as it relates to the subdivision.
Maybe I'll get it right this time. Rich Garman, 53, Winding Way. This is strictly for the subdivision to take the 20 and the 60 and make it 40-40 or so, right? You're splitting, taking two lots, combining them, and making two different sized lots. So I can ask about that. If it is denied, is there any reason that those properties still could not be developed in accordance with the zone?
Objection, you're being, she's being asked to answer if the board denies a fully conforming subdivision application?
I am asking that if the subdivision doesn't, can the lots be developed as they are within the requirements of the present zone? Is that good?
Whether you can develop the properties?
As they are.
I think the question, actually, Mr. Giannetti, is pretty good considering everything. And I think Ms. Cofone is more than capable of answering it.
So I wasn't retained to do an analysis on the developability. I apologize, I don't want to turn my back to you, but it's most appropriate that I face the board when I answer.
I'm married, I'm used to it.
Fair enough. So that wasn't when I was retained.
I'm getting paid for that.
As you should. I was retained to provide my opinion on the subdivision analysis. So my opinion is that it's a conforming subdivision. That was also the opinion of Mr. Maskey, so I'm not here to offer opinion on the development potential of the site absent compliance with, or absent the board's approval of the subdivision.
Okay, how can I ask it differently? The, the present lots meet the zoning requirements, so they could be developed? All right, it's not going to work. Okay.
Hi, Judy Haas, Titus Court, not associated with anybody. I just wanted to clarify something before I ask questions. Was this, were you involved in the plan for this property? Or were you just hired to defend somebody else's plan?
Again, Ms. Haas, I apologize, I'm not, I have to face the board. So I'm not sure what you mean when you say the plan for this. Do you mean the governing bodies' plan for it when they put it in the T E C D zone? Whose plan? I'm not, whose plan are we defending here?
Somebody representing the applicant. In other words, was this a team effort that you were involved in? Or was this done by somebody else among the applicant's experts? And you were just hired to talk about the subdivision?
So this was most definitely a team effort. We have had many, many meetings, Zooms, and collaborations on this. So it is definitely a team effort, for sure. But this phase of the application is for me to opine on the subdivision, which is conforming and lacks variances. That's not just my opinion, that is the opinion of Mr. Maskey, your board professional, who issued a letter in April of 2022 where he found the subdivision to be inconformant and need no variance relief.
Okay, so one of the things I wanted to ask about is what you said at the December 8th, 2022 meeting, that by complying with the uses and bulk standards and the ordinance for the tech zone, you were providing the township with what they wanted for this property. Personally, I find that a very sui generis argument. I am, well, I'll ask a question. Are you impressed with two lots that add up to 90 acres, meeting the bulk standards for a zone that used to be a 50-acre zone?
Objection.
Fact?
Objection.
What's the objection, Mr. Giannetti?
She's asking whether she's impressed about the size of the lots and talking about historical zoning?
I have not finished my question. Can we be polite? Okay?
Let her finish the question, then we'll get to the issue of whether it can be answered.
I can't hear you, Eric.
Get to the end of the question, Mrs. Haas, and then we'll decide whether or not it can be answered.
Thank you. Okay, so, I could even rephrase this. Well, actually, no, I'll stick with that. Should we be impressed by the fact that two lots adding up to 90 acres meet the bulk standards for a zone that used to be a CDZ zone, which had 50-acre minimum lot size, to a tech zone which now has five acres for transitional and less intense use purposes? In other words, how could the bulk standards for this size property not be met? Is that clear?
So as far as being impressed, I'm not going to opine whether I'm impressed or not, nor do I think it's relevant or even appropriate for the board to consider whether they're impressed or not. I think the board has to weigh this application based on its conformance with the zone plan. So whether I'm impressed or not is irrelevant, whether the board's impressed or not also irrelevant. The board should be evaluating this minor subdivision based on its compliance with the zoning standards that were put in place by the governing body here in Hillsborough.
Okay, well, you know about those zoning standards that were put in place by the governing body. One of them was changed recently to eliminate the use of warehouses in the tech zone. So plans change.
Just ask the question, please, Ms., just ask the question.
Okay, are you aware also of the caveat that was in the tech zone, which said that all uses shall be provided at a scale and size that's appropriate for the district?
Objection.
Objection.
Objection, her testimony is only as to the subdivision, we're not talking about the buildings or the site plan.
I'm speaking to her comment, and her comment at the last meeting stated that it conforms in all aspects with regard to use and bulk criteria.
The subdivision.
Yes.
So all we're talking about is the lot line adjustment, we're not talking about the buildings?
That's what she was talking about. She said it benefits the township because it puts the ordinances in place, and if you have an application that comes before the planning board that conforms in all aspects in regard to the use and bulk criteria, then certainly, you know legislatively, the governing body put into place the zoning ordinance, so to implement the zoning ordinance certainly benefits the community. I'm reading from the transcript. Okay? So keep objecting, that's very helpful in terms of, you know, suppressing information.
It's not.
I'm happy to answer the question. I didn't read the transcript, but I did watch my video from the last time we were together. I categorically stand by my testimony. That zoning ordinance has no governance in it for maximum size of structures. I can tell you as a planner that's practiced in the state of New Jersey for almost 30 years now, being qualified as an expert witness in well over 400 towns, I'm very familiar with many ordinances. It's not unusual to see governances and ordinances for the maximum size of buildings, for the maximum size of lots that you can develop. There is no such governance in the ordinance here. So I stand by my testimony that this application and this subdivision and these lots are absolutely inconformant with the zone.
Okay, because it's very easy for it to conform. So now I'll go on to other questions. Since you've been a planner for over 30 years, do you live in Hillsborough?
Where I live is irrelevant.
Yeah.
Okay, or I'll take that, I'll take that for a no.
Based on her testimony, please ask the questions.
I'm trying.
Okay. She, I don't think she testified ever that she lived in Hillsborough.
Okay, are you familiar with our master plan and all of its amendments and updates?
Yes.
Okay. Have you driven around Hillsborough? And are you familiar with Homestead Road, Willa Road, Amwell Road, Hillsborough Road, and the Hillsborough bypass?
I've done a number of applications in Hillsborough, so I'm familiar with Hillsborough.
Okay. Well, I'd like to inform you that there's no exit from the bypass to Homestead Road, and that was a deliberate decision that goes back to 2000.
Objection.
I'm getting to my point.
But you're testifying.
I'm not testifying.
You are testifying as to facts.
You keep interrupting.
You keep testifying as to facts.
Well, we'll agree to disagree on that.
You'll have an opportunity to do that at a later point.
We'll agree to disagree on that. But be that all as it may. Are you aware that 20 years ago, Homestead was partially a dirt road?
Objection, again. Relevancy in testifying as to facts.
Well, I'm getting there. Homestead Road was a dirt road about 20 years ago.
Objection.
Ms. Haas, get there.
Just please get right to the question.
Okay.
No setups.
You're not, you're not helping the board.
Oh, I think I am.
No, I can tell you, asking questions that can't be answered doesn't help the board.
Can't being a relative word, but that's okay. I would just like to focus, okay, let's focus on the subdivision. If the subdivision is approved, shouldn't the plan be bifurcated into two different warehouse applications?
Objection. You can answer it.
Why?
There's no reason to.
Does every developer that comes into this town get two for the price of one?
I can't speak to that.
Objection, objection.
There are other developers, there are other developers that have re-warehouse proposals.
This is only for the subdivision.
Ms. Haas, very pointed, direct questions on the subdivision.
I'm trying to see what the subdivision means, other than to?
Well, you can ask her what a subdivision means.
Well, I know what the word means, but in the case of this subdivision, what was the point of this subdivision? If you had a 60-acre lot and a 20-acre lot, and you're making them into like, what is it, 38 and 48? Other than to maximize?
Objection.
Let her finish.
Okay, I'll leave the question there, I'll leave it there. What's the purpose of changing it to those sizes?
To reconfigure the lots.
Excuse me?
To reconfigure the lots.
In order to do what?
Ultimately, the applicant will file a site plan application.
Okay, to cover as much ground as possible. Okay, how do you define the word transitional?
In between two things.
Excuse me?
In between two things.
Okay, and would you agree that this zone is in between a light industrial zone and a whole lot of open space and residential housing of maybe 25, 3,500 square feet?
That's going to be a question for part two when Ms. Cofone comes back. Because she's going to do a complete testimony on the application itself. This is a very narrow scope.
Okay.
Just, just strictly doing the subdivision or the reconfiguration of the two lots.
Okay. Despite the bulk requirements, the ordinance states that size and scope are still the decision of the township. May I point out that nine football fields could be fit into the two buildings?
Objection.
Just, Ms., just ask a question, please. Stop filling between. So it means ask a question, answer.
About the subdivision too, nothing about the buildings.
I'm just trying to understand, when you say that the use, that the bulk standards and the use were complied with, how are you complying with uses provided? All uses should be provided at a scale and size that's appropriate for the district.
So the use was determined by your planner here in Hillsborough also to be permitted. So it is a permitted use in the zone, warehouse in the T E C D district. When this application was filed, was a specifically permitted use. So that's how I come to the determination that the use is allowed.
Okay, but the size of the warehouse was not a?
Objection.
That's the application.
Okay.
We can't talk about the improvements, just the two empty lots.
Okay, well, number one, I think it should be, but I'll wait. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Martin, Hillsborough Road. Ms. Cofone, you testified that you have testified in about 400 different towns?
Before 400 different planning or zoning boards.
Okay. Have you ever encountered the T E C D zone or a transitional economic development zone in any other town?
No, not by name.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Manville. I, I don't remember all of the testimonies, but I apparently had some questions. Why was the applicant requesting a lot line change?
It's been asked and answered, it's been asked and answered a dozen times at the last hearing when you asked questions.
I'm going to allow it.
Were the lots conforming before the lots, the lot line was changed?
Yes.
Both lots were conforming?
Yes.
And what's the advantage to moving the lot line?
We don't have to demonstrate an advantage. The lot lines conform, the subdivision conforms.
You don't have to, you don't have, what was that answer? You don't have to provide an advantage?
We don't.
Wasn't that supposed to be to the benefit of the township?
The subdivision has to be conforming, or if we needed variances, we would have to put on our?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
If you would stop interrupting me, you might be able to.
I can't hear you.
All right.
The subdivision has to conform with the ordinance. If we don't conform with the ordinance, and in order to be entitled to the subdivision, we would have to prove the variance relief. We don't need any variances, so we put on the testimony for a conforming subdivision.
All right, so you don't need any variances, and so it doesn't matter if it, if it's beneficial to the township or not? Thank you.
Okay, I see no one else, so you may move on to your next. We've got about 15 minutes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next witness is Mike Ford.
Michael. Oh, yeah, yeah. You're going to use?
Yeah.
Do you want to bring it up?
Testimony about to give truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, so help you God?
Yes.
State your full name, spell last name for the record, and by whom you're employed.
Michael Ford, F O R D, with Van Cleef Engineering Associates, 32 Brower Lane, Hillsborough, New Jersey.
The reason for the purpose of the record, though, Mr. Ford, he's been previously sworn in, is he's putting on new testimony, and therefore I would like him sworn in.
Sure, and?
You shouldn't feel that he's being singled out.
And you were previously accepted as an expert in the field of civil engineering by this board as part of this application?
Yes.
And you previously testified before this board on this application concerning the site plan, correct?
Yes.
And?
Hold on a second.
Mic's off.
I think you might be better off just holding it, Mike.
Good.
And since that testimony, we've received board professional review letters, and you've made some updates to the plans to address some of those comments with respect to the site plan, is that correct?
Correct.
And did you or someone in your direction prepare any exhibits in connection with tonight's meeting?
Yes.
And if you can identify this exhibit and confirm it was submitted to the board previously?
Mark, this is a four.
Yes, this, this exhibit that's on the screen is entitled "Site Rendering for the Block and Lots of the Property," dated February 17th, 2023.
So using this exhibit, if you can just kind of walk through the board, you know, the changes that were made and what you were addressing and what is being depicted on this exhibit? exhibit?
Okay. On February 17 of this year, prior to one of the prior hearings, we made a complete and formal submittal updating the project plans with various aspects of the projects, project that the applicant had committed to making changes at prior hearings. First, substantively, the building's location, parking haven't changed, the driveway access on Homestead Road haven't changed. The substantive changes were to address specific comments and review memorandums from both the, well, from the fire official, Chris Winiger, dated April 28, 2022, a memorandum from David Maskey, the planning director, dated April 29, 2022, and an engineering review memorandum, number one, by Drew DeSessa Penoni Associates, dated May 6, 2022, as well as an environmental commission comment review memorandum dated December 7, 2022, and part of our submittal in February addressed specifically all the comments in those review memorandums that I've just outlined. One of the aspects of the changes to the site plan was to eliminate and minimize any relief that would be necessary as part of the application, and by virtue of the recent memorandums that we've received, and this will be addressed in subsequent planning testimony regarding the site plan, that relief now has been, from a zoning standpoint, pared down to the building height, and that will be addressed by the planner in subsequent testimony. So all the relief that was identified, pointed out as part of prior public hearings and review memorandums has been eliminated. That is, sidewalks have been added out to Homestead Road, traffic calming devices have been implemented within the parking areas across the front of the buildings, additional landscape and buffering have been provided as well as extended heights of retaining walls to screen parking areas. Specifically, while I mentioned landscaping, one of the aspects of the plan was an increase in the proposed landscaping to a total of 856 trees. That includes revegetating many of the existing disturbed areas on site, including the prior agricultural use areas, and that proposal complies with the township's tree mitigation ordinance in that all the required trees for mitigation are provided on the site, and there is no economic hardship waiver which is permitted under the tree mitigation ordinance of the town. There's no economic hardship waiver being requested as part of this application, nor is there a proposal to provide any of the required trees off-site. They're all on-site. In the fall of last year, our office conducted additional site-specific surveying. Those updated surveying maps in the form of topographic maps were submitted to the township on November 28 of 2022. I don't recall receiving any review comments from the township staff regarding those mapping that were done in response to work in activities that were done by the farmer on the site and a concern about whether any of those farming activities impacted the design of the site plan. So we performed that supplemental surveying, performed or provided specific maps of those areas of concern, and then as part of the February 2023 resumittal incorporated all those updated mapping of the existing conditions as part of the site plan, and there were no appreciative impacts to any of the design. The limit of disturbance hasn't changed significantly. We're still at impacting with disturbance on the site less than half of the total 80 acre, 88 acres, and that specific request has been addressed by virtue of those updated plans. With regards to the stormwater management on the site, there are still three basins proposed. Those basins have been changed or converted to, and they're still in the same locations they were before. They've been changed from or to pond-constructed wetlands. By virtue of that change, that eliminates any concerns about soil testing at those basin locations and ensures that the quantity, the volume within those basins can be preserved by virtue of, as opposed to some type of infiltration basin or a basin that requires infiltration where maintenance might be lacking over years or the infiltration diminishes and may impact the volume reserved in those basins to control stormwater runoff by a pond-constructed wetland. It's a lined basin. It provides a wetland type of habitat in the bottom of the basin, so it's not a lush, you know, green grass bottom with a concrete low-flow channel, but actually has a permanent pool with also low marsh and high marshes for wetland type of vegetation that's planted as part of the construction of that basin, so provides for some habitat opportunities and would be solely directed for quantity control. While I'm discussing quantity, as I sit here since I last appeared, I think in June or July of last year regarding this application, I'm sure members of the public and the board are aware that there was discussion, an actual proposal at one point by the governor at the beginning of last summer to adopt an emergency order impacting stormwater management design in the state. Specifically, that would include changing the rainfall data that we use to evaluate stormwater management facilities in their design. That emergency order didn't go to fruition, but the NJDEP did propose and publish rule changes in December of 2022. They've been through the public comment period, which ended earlier this year, and I understand that they're maybe adopted soon. What we've already done is, in our constant interactions with NJDEP, NJDEP staff have secured the data for that new rainfall events, and actually it's two rainfall events. It's an adjusted, what they call adjusted current rainfall data and future rainfall data that's projected some years out. So in addition to our analysis utilizing the current rainfall data, the drainage report that was submitted in February includes the quantity analysis for both of those proposed new rainfall events in the yet-to-be-adopted new regs. And the basins as designed control the runoff for the two 10- and 100-year storm for those new rainfall events, as well as the current standard that we are required to. So while it's not required yet, we've actually already analyzed and designed for the pending changes in the rainfall events. With regards to other stormwater management aspects, we had, as part of the prior submittal, included porous pavement areas as well as mechanical treatment devices. Based on comments we received and further assessment of the stormwater management aspects of the project for water quality, this is quality now, the treatment of the stormwater runoff from motor vehicle surfaces, so that would include other impervious coverages like the buildings or the sidewalks. What we've proposed is eliminating any of those previously proposed porous pavement areas in the truck-trailer parking areas. There was concern raised about that, and we've reduced the proposed porous pavement areas that were in the vehicle parking areas. And what the treatment mechanism to provide for water quality to replace those areas of porous pavement that have been eliminated is mechanical treatment devices. These are special devices that are placed within the parking areas in advance of catch basins and provide for water quality treatment, and these are devices that are supplied by a manufacturer. You know, it's manufactured treatment devices. We call them MTDs. The suppliers vary. There's numerous sources, and as part of the supplier's proposal for such a device, they have to have certification from DEP that device meets the 80% TSS removal or total suspended solids removal rate required by the water quality treatment standards. And as part of our report, we include that NJDEP certification that those devices meet the NJDEP standard. Then finally, with regards to stormwater runoff, the groundwater recharge, we are or have included, incorporated as part of the plan now, small-scale subsurface infiltration basins under the parking area. These basins collect roof runoff, so it's roof runoff that by virtue of it not being a motor vehicle surface, has limited pre-treatment requirements, just a leaf screen on the, on the collection system on the roof, and then it's connected directly to an underground system that promotes groundwater recharge. These are linear BMPs. There's five of them. While we believe that really that the required recharge volume for the project doesn't require all five, we've identified five areas and included them, two at the Westerly Building and three at the Easterly Building. With regards to other outside agencies, we have made a resumittal in March to the Soil Somerset Union Soil Conservation District. We've also made a resumittal to the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. We're in receipt of a May 4 review report from the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission indicating, and that included their stream quarter review, that had questions regarding additional detail regarding the stream quarter impacts, not an objection to what we've proposed. In their report, they did acknowledge that these are conditional uses for the intrusions within the stream quarter, and that is limited to the two access roads to the Westerly Warehouse and connections to the public sewer that run along the onsite stream quarters for the two buildings, so the public sewer utility connections, and then the three discharges from the stormwater management basins. No other intrusions within the DRCC stream quarter are proposed as part of the application, so we've minimized that aspect of it. While I'm speaking of the impacts to the stream quarter, the two access roads to the Westerly Warehouse, I discussed this at one of the prior hearings, that in addition to impacting the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission's stream quarter, also impacts the flood hazard area governed by NJDEP as well as the riparian zone associated with those water courses. And on March 30 of this year, we made a formal smittle to NJDEP for the flood hazard area verification and individual permits for those crossings, as well as the other disturbances within the stream quarter that I just outlined, the Senate, two sanitary sewer connections and the three discharges from the basins.
Okay, perfect timing.
I was looking at my watch. That's all we have is a direct presentation as to the revised plans. I know there'll be comments and questions from the board professionals and the board. So I'll leave it to you, Chairman.
We've reached our time limit, so I guess we will have questioning at the next hearing at that point. I just, you know, I appreciate, you know, Mr. Ford getting that in this evening so that we can continue next time, you know, get right to questioning. To David, we have a, are we scheduled?
June 22, 2023. We have, we have it essentially penciled in for that. There's a time of decision, just a friendly reminder, still a time of decision of June 30, 2023. So we've been holding this date, June 22, 2023, for Homestead Road LLC.
You're available?
Yeah.
Great. Works for me.
Okay.
That works for us.
Any objectors?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
My expert. I'm sorry, that date is not good for my expert. Mr. Dr. Emerson.
I mean, we can address it at that point. We still have a few more witnesses to go on our end.
Right.
I would, Mr. Chairman, point out to the objectors that those objectors who are planning on presenting reports, the magic date is Monday, June 12, 10 days before. I anticipate that on the outside chance that we will get to them. If we don't, then obviously you take that chance that we won't. Chairman, a motion to continue this application to Thursday, June 22, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Assume thereafter, as the matter may be heard, without further notice.
Okay, Ron Scobbo just made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Who made the second? Ms. Chicarrell made the second.
Chicarrell made a second. Roll call. Mr. Scobbo?
Say yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Committee member Chicarrelli?
Yes.
Mary Leponti?
Yes.
Chairman Sirocchi?
Yes.
Thank you.
We will have an application, Mr. Chairman, next week.
That's right, so we will be back here on next week, June 1, just as a reminder. And with that, I will entertain a motion of adjournment.
We will move.
Second.
Oh, in favor. Aye, we urge her.